Welcome to the February 20th, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Mayor Pro Tem Fleming provide the invocation. If you would stand for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. Thank you.
Let us pray. The most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we just thank you for all the blessings you've given us, Father. We're so thankful to live in such a wonderful country and the freedoms that we enjoy. We're thankful for this city and all the blessings that we have here, Father. We just thank you for that, Father. Tonight, Father, we just ask your wisdom and direction as we make decisions regarding each case here tonight, Lord. We just pray that the decisions that we make will be pleasing to you and all that we undertake to do. Forgive us where we do fail you. These things we pray in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
I move to excuse Councilman Teetz for being out of the county.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we excuse Councilmember Teetz for being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Before we start the public hearings, I'm going to ask to suspend the rules. If I could have a second, I'll explain why. Moved by the Chair and seconded by Councilman Campbell to suspend the rules. Discussion? This evening, we have two public hearings that I would like to move forward because we have many witnesses here tonight that I think we can get out of here in a timely manner if we move those forward. So I am going to ask to move those forward after we suspend the rules. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. I would like to move C-01D and C-01I forward so we can take care of those public hearings and release the witnesses that are here for those public hearings. If I could get support.
Support. Is it a motion? Support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming that we move C-01D and C-01I forward. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. So our first order of business is public hearing C-01D. So I will open that public hearing and ask the parties involved in the Manjin Lau matter to come forward.
Here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers.
Good evening.
My name is Harold Freed, accompanied by my partner, John Hanke, and by Brandon Chino.
Mr. Freed, could you move the microphone up to you?
Certainly, Your Honor. I'm sorry, I thought I was shorter.
It used to be.
Your Honor, we have received notice of a hearing. As a matter of fact, I spoke with city attorney last week in court, and my client brought it to my attention. We received it in our office in the mail on Friday. There are some matters going on here that I've spoken with this city attorney about. I believe we can wrap all of those matters together, resolve this matter in a way that would be in the city's best interest, which my client would be more than willing and happy to do. And so that they could go on for another 44 years and be a good business member of the community. I've talked with city attorney about it, and I'd ask you to move this to the next council meeting, which I believe is March 18.
March 18.
And I would meet with city attorney and everyone involved and find a resolution that I would hope that would satisfy the city, which my clients are very willing to do.
City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Julie Quinnlin-Dufresne, and I am assistant city attorney for the city of Troy. As Mr. Freed has alluded to, there are some outstanding criminal matters. Therefore, we are attempting to resolve those. I do think it would be in the best interest if we set this matter over to a later date in time, hopefully with a resolution for all.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify with this process that one of the reasons why we hold the hearings when we do is so that there's sufficient time for council to object to the otherwise automatic renewal of an on-premises license. However, we, our deadline is at the end of March. So there is some time. A March 18 hearing date would provide you with all of the opportunities and would not waive any of the rights that you do have under Michigan law.
Thank you. Are there any questions by council? Okay. I have to close the public hearing first and then bring it back.
Actually, if...
Mayor, I would recommend that if there are persons in the audience that are interested in speaking on this item, that you at least allow them to speak tonight.
Okay.
And then if it's council's desire, you could continue the public hearing or you could close the public hearing and then postpone the matter until the March 18 agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the table. If somebody would like to move a postponement? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Mayor, I move that we postpone a decision on this. The public hearing is now closed. So I move that we postpone further discussion and decision until March 18, 2013, at 7:30.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming that we postpone item C-01D until the next scheduled meeting of March 18, 2013, at 7:30. Discussion? Councilman Pennington?
Our next meeting is actually March 4. Do we want to do it then or we want to wait till the 18?
They asked for the 18.
We would appreciate the 18 only because it is our intention to resolve all matters outstanding with the city and come up with a plan and a resolution of this matter that the city finds acceptable. I mean, we've got a little bit of time.
So the motion is for March 18, then we'll strike the next one. I think I said next, but March 18, 2013. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll see you back here on March 18.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmen. We will do everything to get this out by that day.
Thank you. And we can release all witnesses that were here for the public hearing C-01D. Our next order of business is public hearing C-01I. I will open that public hearing and ask the parties for the Palm Restaurant to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could state your name?
Bill Thomas, manager of Palm's Restaurant.
Is it your intent this evening to postpone this item?
Yes.
Could you, is it for the same reason that was mentioned before, if the city attorney could speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There are also criminal charges associated with this matter as well. I do know that Mr. Thomas is represented by council both for a criminal matter and also for this matter. And I believe it would be in his best interest if he had his attorney, I believe it's Shamile Halabu.
Yeah.
I believe it would be in his best interest if the attorney was here for that hearing as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move it back to the table. Is there a council member that would like to move a postponement till March 18?
We do 18th and 4.
Let's have them on both on the 18th so the city attorney can be here for the same night, if that's okay.
Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
I move the resolution that on item I here, that we postpone this hearing until our meeting on March 18, 2013.
Second?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell that we postpone item C-01I until March 18, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll see you here on March 18. Our next public hearing is C-1A. So I will open that public hearing and ask the parties to come forward. El Patio Mexican Restaurant?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could give us your name?
Yes, Maria De La Paz.
Is it your intent to waive your right to a hearing this evening?
Well, I wanted to, I was not able to have my attorney with me today. I would like for you guys to listen, to hear what I have to say, and then you can make your own decision. I have another restaurant that also has a liquor license, and we've had it for three years. We've never had any problems with it. Everybody works, you know, to the code. Everybody knows the rules. You're not supposed to serve to minors. And we did have someone that worked with us a couple of weeks only. He was helping us because we were short on someone. He was taking over. He was not supposed to be selling alcohol. He was just managing the place. But he did came and helped the waiter that we had serve to the minor. So he was not in compliance with the liquor control. He does not even live here. He's from South Carolina. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I may, just offer a brief recitation of the facts. This was a sale to minor. It was part of the Troy Police Department's Directed Patrol Unit. It was a, the violation occurred on November 13, 2012. The server is by the name of Rafael De La Paz. He did, he was issued a citation for sale or furnishing alcohol to a minor. This is interesting to note that the server did actually ask the decoy for the identification. The decoy indicated that she didn't have it, and the server said, "Well, that's okay. You don't need to go get it." Mr. De La Paz did pay his civil infraction $100 fine shortly after it was issued. And I would also note at the MLCC, they also stipulated to the facts as I presented them, and the MLCC ordered El Patio to pay a $500 fine, which I believe has been paid. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and then...
Yes.
What happened to the server?
He came, he's actually my brother-in-law. He works, he has, he has his family in South Carolina. That's where he lives. He came and helped my husband for a couple of weeks because we were short on someone. So right after he completed the two weeks, he left back to his home. But everything has been paid for.
Okay, so he no longer works there?
No.
Are you familiar with the training?
Yes.
Tips and Tams?
Yes.
Can you tell the council what you have done?
Yes.
To train your personnel?
Yes. Everybody has been trained after that, of course, even before, but he was not supposed to serve alcohol. He was only supposed to be behind the counter, you know, taking people's money. So everybody knows that you're not supposed to serve to minors. You're supposed to always ask for an ID, even if they look 35 years old, they don't have it, you don't serve it to them. Everybody has been trained. We tell them over and over. So even if we see somebody and we're like, "Did you ask them for their ID?", we keep reminding each other. So we work together.
Anybody else? Councilman Pennington?
Is your other restaurant also in the city of Troy?
It's in Farmington Hills.
In this restaurant, her restaurant in Troy, has she had, is this a first offense or is it?
First offense.
Mr. Councilman Pennington, actually, they've only been licensed since May of this year, 2012, so they have no previous violations.
If we could from now on move to the mic, it's the only way that we can record.
Can you say that again?
It's a very difficult procedure, but if we could just remember to go to the microphone. If you could just say that again, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Addressing Council Pennington's question, El Patio Restaurant has been, has had a liquor license in the city of Troy since May of this year, I'm sorry, 2012. So they do not have any previous violations.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
You indicated that you have another restaurant in Farmington Hills. Is there a history of violations on that?
No violations at all.
Okay.
Three years and no violations.
Mayor Troy, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. So each one of your servers now are trained in advance of being allowed to sell alcohol. You have no one in your restaurant now?
Correct. No one is allowed to serve alcohol without asking an ID, unless they look really old, you know. But I tell them if they look 35 years old or young, ask IDs.
The question is, I'll clarify, is everyone in your restaurant now trained tips or Tams?
The course?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they took the course also.
You hire someone new, they're immediately trained?
Correct.
Before they can serve alcohol?
Correct.
Are there any other questions? This has been, the training has taken place in the last six months?
Yes.
Pretty much?
Yes.
So you don't have anybody that's worked there that got trained a year ago somewhere else? But you've trained everybody at...
No. We train them whenever they...
Within the last six months?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the table for discussion. I noticed we have different versions of the resolution. Normally, we have a one and a two. If I could just reach out to the city attorney, Bloom, to ask us how she would prefer the procedure on these resolutions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The resolution, it does have a choice. As I've stated before, you do have the option of objecting to the automatic renewal. So if you, so...
Could we go with just like, one is, we would use the word "has" and "objects", and two would be "has not" or "recommends"? Is that possible?
Yeah. Mayor, what you would do, the resolution, if you have not, if you have been persuaded, then you would select the "has" instead of the "has not" in the resolution. And then the next, be it further resolved where you're objecting, you would actually, you would say that you do not object. So that would have to be a change to that resolution. Or actually, Your Honor, it would just be, you would eliminate that sentence where it says "objects to the renewal", and then you would just say "recommends renewal". So...
So could we use one as "has" and "objects", and two as "has not" and "recommends"?
That's fine, Your Honor.
Okay.
Has not and two has and recommends.
Mayor? I'm trying to get from having to read the whole thing. So if we want to, we have a "has" and a "recommends" and a "has not" and an "objects". Or the other opportunity would be to say, "We have been persuaded the violation occurred, yet we still recommend or object to or recommend the renewal to take place." Correct. So whoever moves the resolution, if they could just keep in mind what the purpose of the resolution is, Councilman Campbell?
I think if you vote yes, you're already saying all the positive things, right? So it's a yes or a no, really.
I don't think the city clerk's going to let...
I mean, if you put a yes, it's so you say you have and you recommend. You say no, you obviously have rejected that.
I, we would be okay with just moving the resolution to recommend renewal and leave it at that.
And leave it at that.
And we'll go through and decipher and pick out "has" and if you just want to move recommend or move object.
Okay.
Yeah, I still have a question, but we can wait until after the resolution. I can answer the question.
Okay. Do you have a resolution?
I'll do that.
Okay.
We'll keep this simple, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recommend renewal of the on-premise liquor license for the 2013 license year. And we've already stipulated that people have been trained, but you need to also present proof to the police department that all of your people have been trained, that was part of the resolution, within 90 days if that's not already occurred.
Okay. I'll support that.
Yes.
We support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell to recommend that we approve the resolution as read and printed. Councilman, Councilwoman McGinnis?
Do we need to include in our resolution, though, that we actually have a finding that we've been persuaded that the alleged violation occurs, or is that just going to be a foregone conclusion?
Since it is admitted, again, I think the easiest way for you to do, and I do apologize, we really did try to make it easier, but I can see how it'd be very difficult. The recommending renewal, Mayor, would be, would incorporate all of the, Councilwoman McGinnis would incorporate all of the stipulations. One of those stipulations is that they provide the tips and Tams training proof within 90 days to the Troy Police Department. So as long as you don't deviate from that, as long as it's just the recommending renewal resolution, then all of those will be incorporated.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, did you have anything else? Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do you understand what happened this evening?
Yes, that I need to send proof to the police department of my employees that they've been trained? Yes.
Within 90 days?
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
And if you come back here within a year, you will not, you will not get the same kind of deal.
Yes, I won't come, you won't send me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next public hearing is C-1B. I will open that public hearing and ask the parties involved with the Gallatin Incorporated, which is Camp TiConroga, to come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, we, I've, I'm one of the officers of Gallatin Camp TiConroga, and we have operated Camp TiConroga for 17 years now. I understand that it is a city-owned property, and with that comes even more responsibility in the service, responsible service of alcohol. On November 13, one of our bartenders served a minor. She was immediately terminated. She was tips trained, all of our bartenders and servers are. In fact, three of our corporate employees are certified to teach the tips awareness training class. We have it probably four times a year. She was trained. I have her certificate here. It was less than a year before this happened. In addition to that, our employees are reminded throughout the year to check IDs on anyone who looks under the age of 35. All employees, including Lindsay, the one that served a minor in this case, had been reminded early in November, as is customary for us before the holidays, to re-remind everyone on not over-serving people and being careful about checking IDs. The employee made a mistake, and I understand as the holder of the Class C liquor license that we need to take responsibility for that. It's an ongoing challenge for us to keep our employees focused on that. We have pre-shift meetings where the managers will remind everyone working that night about our alcohol awareness service policies. We post bulletins when they're hired. And I have it from Lindsay, they sign a release that specifies they will be terminated for serving a minor. But we do take it very, very seriously, and we're going to have to do better.
Mr. Mayor, if I may give a brief recitation of the facts. Your Honor, again, or, Mr. Mayor, this does involve another Directed Patrol Unit compliance check with Troy Police Department. The violation did occur on November 13 of 2012. I did not catch your name. Linda Egland. Linda Egland, as Ms. Egland has indicated, the bartender in this instance did serve a decoy a glass of wine. She, the bartender did not inquire as to the decoy's age. The bartender did end up paying her civil infraction, was a $100 fine. She had me responsibility. I believe, my last information is that the disposition at the MLCC is still pending. My information was only good through January 31. Has that changed? No. Okay. As far as history, there are two previous sale-to-minor violations, the last one being in 2010. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Councilman Henderson?
Not a question, more or less a comment, but in other ones that we're going to be reviewing tonight, you know, the servers for food services were in violation. In this situation, it was a bartender. And I think that kind of elevates the situation a little bit. If a person serving, hired only to serve alcohol, can't get it right, then there obviously was a lapse there. So it's just more important to look at that, I think.
Hope this, anyone who serves the alcohol, whether it be the, you're right, the bartender should be especially diligent, but we would hope that anyone who handles alcohol would be.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Just a question. How long had this individual been an employee, and how many times had they been through training?
Well, she was hired, she signed her bot...
Well, she was hired, um, she signed her bot, her, she'd, she'd been employed with us for over a year. She became a bartender, um, in April of, April of '12, 2012.
Mm-hmm.
And she had the TIPS training class on, shoot, I don't have my glasses, but, um, let's see, it expires, it's, TIPS training expires in April of 2015, and I believe they're good for three years, so that would've made it 2012 also, that she had the training.
Questions?
I don't know if you wanna see it, I have the actual.
Okay. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Um, do you utilize any software at your restaurant where the bartender or the serving staff would have to plug in someone's tel, oh, not telephone number, their birthday before they could ring up alcohol for them? Is that something you've explored?
Um, no, actually, that's the first I've, I've heard of that. Um, something to look into, I suppose. It would be one more step.
Well, I mean, it does, and this is just a commentary about, it, it does sound that, like you're taking this seriously. I mean, you've, you've got reminders and, and you can recall times that you got your staff together to remind them during certain times of the year. So on your part, it does appear that you're doing quite a few things, and because this is still happening, I'm just wondering if there are other options, too, that you could explore, um, that would, you know, help make it a, a little bit more fail-safe as well on top of the things that you're other doing, you're also doing.
Yeah, we need, we need to look into that, but I, I mean, I do wanna point out that we've been in business 17 years, and I, I believe this is, we've had, we had one previous one, and we've actually been in business in the, the food and beverage industry, serving alcohol for 25 years, and we've had, I guess we had one violation at the Moose Preserve a decade ago, and, and that's it. So, I mean, I, I'm not here to argue this, we, we messed up, but I, I, I don't think that we do a bad job of it. We, we do need to explore things to do a better job. Okay.
I would just ask you to take a look at it. There, there are several businesses in town that do, that do utilize that software program. I believe the 7-Eleven stores, and I can't remember the last time that they ever had a liquor license violation, and I don't know if it's cost prohibitive, but, um, the issue, I think that you would tell everybody is, you can't watch all of your servers, all of the time. And I think everybody recognizes that, so if you have another tool in place that kinda acts like a supervisor for you, um, I think that's a benefit to everybody. They've done things with the license now that, that you can tell right off the bat whether it's a minor. So there is technology out there, and, um, I know it's very difficult to keep your eyes on, on, on everybody as a manager or an owner, so it's just another step. We can't make you do it, but it's just something if you would maybe wanna take a look at. I think it might be something of interest.
Yeah, well, it's a good suggestion. I, I've never heard of it before, but it would be another step that would make you think.
There's scanners, there are scanners, there are, um, I think you could probably talk to the police department, uh, and they could probably point you at, at some, some options that you could at least take a look at.
Okay.
Um, and I think that's the suggestion that was, uh, Councilman Henderson? I'm sorry, Pennington?
That's okay. We look a lot alike. Um, actually, the only thing I would, uh, that concerns me is that the, Lindsay, the girl that was a server, was 25, um, and she'd been working for you as a bartender for a year, so she was 24. I mean, you know, not to discriminate with age, but are there other bartenders that you have that are on the younger side? Because it just seems, you know, as a bartender, that seems like a little young. Is that typical?
No, that's, that's pretty typical. I mean, they, they have to be 18 to be able to handle alcohol at all, but, um, yeah, a 25-year-old bartender would, would not be atypical for us. I mean, that, they should be responsible enough at age 25 to be able to handle doing that. And this girl was. This girl was a good server, she was a good bartender, she just sorta screwed up, you know, so I, um, yeah, usually, usually they're, they're in their early to mid twenties.
If we do pass the resolution this evening, it will require TIPS and TAMS training. Um, but your, your employees are all trained within, oh, are some of them a year or two years?
Well, they don't, they don't, um, they don't serve alcohol until they get their certification. Some of them come to us that already have got it from other restaurants, but we have the classes for, for, maybe four times a year, and until then, they run food or they host us, or they learn other parts of the business.
Many times when, um, someone comes before us, we like to see training, current training.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, many times we will amend a resolution to require training of anybody that hasn't had TIPS or TAM training in the past six months. Um, how many employees do you have there?
Oh, that, that servers and bartenders, probably 40. You, there, I, I know the city has different standards, but there, the, the actual program certifies them for a three-year period, and, yeah, we had a whole slew of them go through a year ago in April. I mean.
We do have a tough standard here, and generally when a business comes before us, sometimes we, we require that everybody's been brought up to date. Um, I'm not suggesting that this evening, but that is an option that's often done by this council.
Would it, would, something like, because we do have certified trainers, if they just did kind of a, a refresher course, and we made every, everyone find a time and, and come and sit through that, you know, in, in the next few months or something, without actually going through the whole testing procedure, if they're already certified, would that help?
Okay. I'll, I'll take that this time, um, especially because you have 40 employees. I understand that that could be burdensome, but, um, most of the time when a business comes before us, we, we like to seek fresh training. But, um, if you could do a refresher, that would be okay?
We'll definitely do some fresh training.
Okay.
I might talk to my management staff this morning, they know that I was not happy to have to be coming here today, so.
Understood.
That won't be a problem.
Be even more dis. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? I'm gonna close the public hearing and return it to the table for a resolution. Councilman Pennington?
Well, I would, uh, move that we recommend renewal of the liquor license with the same stipulations and the proof of training.
If you have support? Look. Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilman Campbell that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Is there a discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, City Attorney Blum, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, the resolution as it's printed does require TIPS or TAMS training proof to be provided within 90 days. So if it's council's intention to allow for a refresher instead of the TIPS and TAMS training, then you may need to modify that, um, resolution to provide that there'll be refresher, um, courses instead.
It's not my intent to, to change it. I, I, I know them well, and if she tells us that she will, she will do that, I'm sure they will. But I still, the police department will still need proof of TIPS and TAMS within 90. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yeah, I, I agree, I think you're on the right track, and I was looking at you for that direction, Attorney Blum, but it basically says, with a stipulation that all serving employees receive TIPS or TAMS or other comparable training acceptable to the police department, that licensee present proof of this training to the police department within 90 days. So I think whatever's done has to be acceptable to the police department. You have to give proof that you've done something, TIPS or TAMS are acceptable, comparable training acceptable to the police department.
Okay.
That's, and I hope that we should modify. Sergeant Zalinski's sitting here today, and he's heard the discussion, and I think that, that he can work with you and accomplish the goal that the city council's trying to achieve here tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Our next public hearing is C1C. I will open that public hearing and ask the parties involved in the Hooters of Troy to come forward. Good evening, councilor.
John Carlin appearing here on behalf of Hooters. Uh, as far as the violation is concerned, we've already disposed of it, we acknowledged it, paid a $500 fine. Uh, I would like to point out, uh, first of all, that Hooters is very serious about this. They have a national requirement. Um, they have been there seven years, uh, well, no, since 2007, and this is the first violation that they've ever had. I'd like to, I brought with me the general manager, uh, he's gonna make a couple of comments, tell you what they do now, uh, and, go ahead, introduce.
Uh, my name is Robert Rice, I'm the general manager of the Hooters in Troy. Um, we do take, uh, responsible alcohol service extremely serious. Um, I'm a proctor, I teach, uh, Serve Safe alcohol to all of our staff. Um, all of our, uh, girls have to be certified before they can go on the floor, um, before any training. Um, they have to pass within, uh, 90% or better, where they say 75%. Uh, we, we, uh, when we hire during orientation, we sew a, a CRAS, uh, commitment to responsible alcohol service, uh, video. Um, we preach it at every single jump start. Um, it's, it's posted, uh, in the, in the changing room, uh, it's posted in the, by all the other laws, Michigan laws, um, and we have zero tolerance. Uh, this person was terminated, uh, the next day, uh, when she came back to work, um, and, uh, that's about it.
I think it's important, too, they also card everybody, and anybody that appears to be in their 30 or younger, uh, their ID is taken and they run it through the swipe system that you were referring to, uh, which is behind the bar, to make sure that it's a legitimate and not doctored in any way. So, uh, they're very serious about this, as you can see, she was terminated, and, uh, and, you know, by the way, um, they're using Serve Safe. Uh, that program is pretty well-known as being one of the best, if not the best. It's much more thorough than TIPS or TAM. It, uh, requires, uh, presence, uh, a lot of training by the trainers, uh, so I think you should include that in there as well, uh, because quite frankly, uh, most of us think that, uh, that's a much stronger, it's, it's more expensive, but it's a better program.
Thank you. We could get the Assistant City Attorney to give us the facts of the incident, please.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may, um, recite the fast, uh, the pet facts, as Mr. Carlin has indicated, they are stipulating to the fact that on May 10th of 2012, a minor decoy, under the direction of the Troy Police Department-directed patrol unit, did enter the Hooters. Um, the decoy was offered, um, a beer by the waitress before he even sat down or was given the opportunity to provide a license. Um, she never did ask for a license, provided the beer. She was issued a citation of civil infraction, she did admit responsibility, paid the $100 fine, um, at the MLCC. They did, Hooters did, again, stipulate to the facts of what occurred on May 10th, 2012, and they were ordered to pay $400, which I believe has been paid, correct? Um, Mr. Carlin indicated this was the first violation for Hooters. That is correct, it's the first violation since 2007. At this location, at the previous location, there were, there were two violations, one in 2001 for serving an intoxicated person and another sale-to-minor violation in April of 2003. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
For the manager, Mr., Mr. Rice, here. How long had this employee been in your employ?
Uh, she was with us about four years.
Four years?
Yep.
So she'd gone through the training more than?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, she's, she was recertified and everything, yeah. I actually did, she was hired before I took over that store, I came from the Roseville location, and, uh, I recertified her, so it was, it was shocking that she was, uh, taken under and decided to ask this guy for a beer before he even offered an ID.
How is it that she could get a beer without using the swipe that, that, doesn't a bartender have to give her the beer?
I mean, well, we.
How would she get a beer without having any ID?
She, well, anybody can ring in a beer, uh, through our POS.
Through POS.
Yes, yeah, so, uh, if, if it's ringing in, then the bartenders, you know, they, they have to assume that everyone was done properly. So, um, again, when I pulled her aside and asked her, I says, "How did you, how did you fill this thing?" She claimed that she asked him if he had an ID, he said it was in his car. She said, "Well, you come in all the time, don't you?" And he said, "Yeah." So she served him. That was her story. Um, I talked to the, the police officer and the decoy, and they had told me, what the attorney said, that she never even carded him, so.
Any other questions? Well, we've been asking everybody, you know, how soon has everybody been trained within, and how many employees do you have?
Uh, between 40 and 47 girls we have, um, our hostesses also, uh, by law, they don't have to be certified, but we certify our hostesses also. Um, every three years, um, they expire, um, so, again, I taught, uh, just taught a class last week, so, um, but that's just for new hires, uh, but anywhere from, uh, December of 2012 back to 2011.
I know you're.
And everyone's current, there's no, nobody expired or anything.
I know your record is very good at this location, um, but, um, we asked Camp Tyga in Drogba to take a look at doing some refresher training, uh, I would ask the same thing from you, um, and coordinate that with Sergeant Zalinski with the, uh, police department, if you could, um, and if this resolution is passed this evening, you'll have 90 days to bring that, uh, to a police department.
Absolutely, yeah, I can retrain everybody, I mean, there's no problem, we'll have a big class.
Or just do a good refresher or something.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Just a statement here. This employee's been with you four years, and I think for every hearing here tonight, but I'm speaking to you specifically now, this operation, direction from the police department, you know, found a violation. We're not naive enough to think this is the only violation you had, with, you just got caught on this one, so you just gotta be really careful. And I think this is just a notice to everybody that the police department, they don't do this very often, they're not out there every week coming into your facility, and so we understand if it happens when the police are coordinating it, it's happening more often, and I'm sure you're aware of that.
Oh, absolutely, I agree, 100%, that's one of the things we talk about with our managers, we do a directional every week, and one of the things that my topic is with my managers, stay on the floor, because, one, they're 18-year-old girls, they're gonna make decisions that aren't in the best interest of the, the restaurant, they're, they're gonna make the interest of what's in their pocketbook, so. I always tell, like, you know, if you have to re-card somebody, I re-card people all the time. I walk around and go, "I know you're drinking a beer, so you probably should already, can I see your ID, please?" So, and just, it does happen.
Councilman Henderson?
Also a statement, not, not a question, but knowing that Hooters is a national chain, I'm sure that they wanna stay away from these incidents as well. And then especially with the notoriety of the transfer of the liquor license a few years ago, it's exceptionally important that Hooters maintains, you know, a, a better reputation than this, so.
Absolutely.
We just expect more.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have a question about the software, because you actually have it, then. My understanding was that in order to ring up the alcoholic beverage, you would have to swipe it, so then it could be rung in, but you're telling me you can swipe the cards just to see if they're valid, but that's totally independent of ringing up the alcohol sale, is that correct?
Right. The, the swipers we have, they're, they're, it's a $700 unit, it's just a little tiny, uh, so you can actually take it to the table, it's a swiper, it tells you if the ID is valid, if they're 21, uh, and so that's the process we have. I know the software, I think you're talking about, is actually on the POS where you swipe it, and it's. it, and it tells you yes or no.
Okay, so you do have software, but it's not the same program I was originally envisioning, but it is another tool that you can use?
Yes, and anybody born in the 80s, the girls have to swipe it.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing and move it back to the table for a resolution.
Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I would move the resolution as printed, finding that the City Council has been persuaded that the violation occurred, and recommending renewal of the on-premise liquor license for the 2013 license year, with the stipulation that all of your serving employees receive tips, Tams, or ServSafe training, or some other comparable training that's acceptable to the Police Department, and present proof within 90 days.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes, good luck. Our next public hearing is C-1E. I will open the public hearing and ask the parties involved with the National Coney Island to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Kelly Allen, appearing on behalf of National tonight. Mr. Giftis is out of town, and the Regional Manager, Dan Roma, appeared last night and called me in a panic, as he was on a plane this afternoon. So rather than ask for a postponement, I said that I would come and cover this for him, I did talk with him about the details, we are handling the LCC violation as well. Did I say my name? Kelly Allen. And it has not been heard by the Liquor Commission yet. I spoke with the, you corresponded, with the City Attorney, we are not asking for a hearing tonight. I think it's important to point out, National's been open there since the year 2000, and 2001, they passed the first controlled buy. In 2003, they did have a sale to minor, and every year since, and sometimes twice per year, they have passed controlled buy situations. They have passed 12 controlled buys since 2001. As you probably are aware, National Coney Island is not really a bar of any kind, their alcohol sales are minute in compared to their other sales, their food sales, it is not the type of place where people go to just drink. The server involved in this, Heather Hess, she was terminated. She did ask the decoy for identification, the decoy said that they didn't have their identification, she said, "Well, how old are you?" And they gave their real age, 1993, which would make the person 19. So she got fired because she violated the company's procedures and rules, and because she can't add or subtract. So they do not have her on staff anymore. They have not had their teams in their various places tips trained in the last six months, I talked to them about that, they don't have any problem in doing that. When they do it, they do it statewide, and, because they have many establishments with liquor licenses. I'm hopeful that you will renew the license, and I do apologize that my client could not be here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may give a brief recitation, I know Ms. Allen did allude to the facts, she and I did speak with, we corresponded by email yesterday, actually. This, again, was a directed patrol unit investigation by the Troy Police Department. This alleged sale to the minor happened on November 13th, 2012. As Ms. Allen indicated, the server did ask for identification, the decoy said she didn't have it, she, the server then asked for the decoy's age, and she responded with her true age of 1983, and as Ms. Allen indicated, that would make her 19, not eligible to have, oh, 893, would make her 19 and not eligible to have alcohol served to her, but she poured it anyways. Ms. Allen indicated that they have not had a violation, I have a sale-to-minor violation in April of 2003.
That's correct.
Okay. And as Ms. Allen indicated, there has not been a resolution yet with the Liquor Commission, but the server did pay her $100 civil infraction fine.
Ms. Allen, I really hate to do this, but I have an issue just having an attorney come representing the business. I think it would be a bad precedent for us to set, because if we did it for you, and somebody else just wanted an attorney to come to represent them, I don't know how we could not continue with that. Would it be a hardship for you to come back on the 18th? We have two other liquor hearings.
I don't, I don't think that's a problem at all. I do want the Council to know, though, that he had every intention of being here.
I'm not, I'm not questioning that whatsoever, but I don't know about how the other Council feels, but I'd like to see the manager and speak with the manager, and get a feel for the manager as well as, and aside from that, I would not want to set a precedent with just having an attorney show up. So, I am going to move to postpone this item until March the 18th, 2013, at 7:30, and if I could get support.
Second, support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we postpone this item until March 18th, 2013, at 7:30. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll see you then.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is C-1F, and I will open that public hearing for Nordstrom Cafe. If the parties involved in that can come forward, please.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Ellie Dello, and I'm the General Manager of the Nordstrom Cafe. I, we, she never asked for ID, and so going forward after that, we made sure that we touched base with everybody every day. We also revisited, because we have an employee training program, which includes alcohol management, we revisited that, and everybody in the restaurant is tip-certified. She was a new employee, she had just started three weeks prior, she's no longer with us. I don't know what else to tell.
You heard a lot of the questioning today, maybe you could just provide some of those answers, if you have them, about training and?
Well, we train, we do the training, and we touch, we do the training every four to six weeks, or four to six months, because during the holidays, obviously, it gets really busy, during our sales, we get busy. We also, the establishment is a lot different. When you walk in the door, we have registers, you place your order there, so we now have the cashiers asking for ID, anybody under the age of 40, and we also have the servers at the table ask for ID. So we double to make sure everybody is on the same page.
If we could get the Assistant City Attorney to give the facts to us, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Slater, if I may give a brief recitation of the facts. This, again, was part of the Troy Police Department's Directed Patrol Unit, working with the minor decoy. The sale to a minor occurred on May 16th, 2012. As Ms. Dello has indicated, the decoy actually ordered a glass of white wine from the cashier, and then she paid for the wine, and then was seated at a table, and then she was served the wine by somebody else. So there were actually two civil infractions that were issued, one to the server and one to the cashier. Neither the server nor the cashier asked the decoy for identification. Both the server and the cashier paid their civil infraction fines back on May 30th. This was disposed of by the MLCC, by Nordstrom paying a $400 fine, is that correct, to your understanding? Okay. Nordstrom has been licensed since 1996, and they have only had one previous, I'm sorry, licensed since 1995, and they've had one previous violation in 1996.
Thank you. Questions from Council? Councilman Henderson?
You mentioned that you have a cashier, as you enter the location, and they card people there, and then they go seated, and then they get carded again. In this situation, somebody slipped through both of those safeguards?
Exactly, exactly.
So what have you done since then, or what have you done prior to that, to ensure that that just doesn't happen?
Well, we retrained everybody. We pulled everybody aside, and we went through, we called them modules, and we did, we do alcohol training now, pretty much two to three times a week on shift meetings that we have.
Councilman Campbell?
Which person was terminated? You had two people, you said one?
The cashier was terminated.
What about the one who served? What happened to her?
The server, we did, we decided not to terminate, she is tip-certified, she was just putting all of her trust in the fact that the cashier checked ID. We also have them writing the date of the year that the person was born on the tickets, because you get your ticket from the cashier, and then you go to the table, so now that the server picks up the book, and the ticket is in there, the guest check, it'll have the date on there, so they know for sure, then they ask them for the ID again.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
How many employees do you have typically?
In the front of the house, I have 28.
Just, just a thought, and something we've talked about in the past, is if you have that many employees, and you might consider your own decoy program from time to time.
We've been doing, yeah, we've been doing role-playing, and actually, that helped a lot, when we started doing the role-playing right after this, because a lot of the younger cashiers don't wanna ask, and they're embarrassed, you know, so we've been role-playing and getting them out of that, and getting them into the habit of asking.
Follow-up, if nobody else?
Sure.
Role-playing, that would be with one of your existing employees, what I'm referring?
No, even store employees coming in.
Okay, so someone they wouldn't know?
Someone they don't know at all.
That's good.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
You mentioned that you have a policy where the cashier asks for identification, and the server does as well, is that a new policy, or is that, was that the policy that was in place when this occurred?
It was the policy that was in place, but she was new, so she didn't realize that she had to ask.
Okay.
Councilman Pennington?
How quickly are new employees trained with the tips and Tams training?
Typically, within about four months, as soon as they come in and they get into all the positions, but we train them with the modules that we have for alcohol management in our training program.
I noticed that your license was placed in ESCO 2010. What was the reason for that?
We closed for over a month and a half, and according to the LCC, it had to be kept in ESCO, because we remodeled.
Okay. You've heard us discuss asking to bring your training up to more current, would you be willing to do refresher classes and work with the Police Department to make sure that, of course, you follow the resolution that we do pass, but also if you could make sure that you refresh the employees that might have been trained a year ago or more, we're kind of asking for that this evening also.
Yes.
Okay, you're willing to do that?
Yes.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for a resolution. Councilman Campbell?
But you're looking right at me.
It's your turn.
Yeah, I'll pass the motion on that we have been persuaded the lead violation did occur and been referenced, and also that we recommend renewal of the license in 2013, based on the ongoing training within 90 days.
Set a forward.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes, good luck.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is C-1G. I will open that public hearing and ask the parties involved with the Mr. Beez slash now Hamlin Pub to come forward.
I am John Carlin, appearing here on behalf of the Hamlin Pub, and to my right is the General Manager, who will introduce himself.
Jim Tavano, General Manager.
Good evening.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. We did just recently negotiate the settlement with the Liquor Commission on the violation. It has not been completed yet, I have the order signed, and we'll get it in, and it was a $500 fine. I have a copy of the record of this establishment since 1989, and it's a pretty darn good record, there's 24, 25 past buys that have occurred. There was one violation back in, I believe it was 2008, for sale to a minor, and other than that, this is the only one. The employee was, as is policy, terminated. All of the employees are trained, and I think that probably the best person to tell you about the operation and what he's going to do would be the General Manager, that's the one you wanna talk to, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, all our employees are tips-trained. We have a tips-trainer on staff full-time, and once a month, they, there's emails sent out to each store, that will be holding a tips-training class. If you are not tips-trained, or you're expiring within 30 days of that date, you have to get trained, or you're taken off the schedule until you pass your certification. Again, this is something that, upsetting to us because of the track record of, we usually get the letter saying you passed very good job from the LCC, this time, unfortunately, server made a mistake, and that server was terminated by myself that evening. They do know that you are taken off the floor immediately, you will not serve anybody else, and of course, terminated from the company.
If we could get the Assistant City Attorney to give us the facts, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this was a directed patrol unit decoy operation with the Troy Police Department. The sale to the minor occurred on November 13th, 2012. In this instance, the bartender poured the decoy a glass of wine without asking the minor decoy for identification or inquiring about her age. I would note that the server in this instance has not paid her civil infraction, she failed to appear for her informal hearing, so she has been defaulted. As Mr. Carlin indicated, I did not have an MLC disposition, apparently, that sounds like that's been disposed of at the MLCC, with respect to a fine. Mr. Carlin indicated that there was a previous violation, I, I think he said 2008, my records show 2010, and I would also note, in 2011, from July of 2011 to February of 2012, the license was in ESCO for failure to pay insurance, but I believe that's been corrected as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll agree with her if it's 210.
If you could just say that again, please.
I'll agree with her if it's 210.
We have a printout, and it says 210, here. Councilman Henderson?
Just a question for Council, if the employee doesn't pay their fine, how does that relate to the business? Is there any attachment still if that fine is outstanding?
Well, I, my understanding would be that they've, they've already terminated the employee, it's the employee's responsibility, she has issued the civil infraction from the Police Department, it's her responsibility, the ticket's in her name, so she has responsibility to pay for that ticket, it doesn't go to the business.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
This is a question directed to the General Manager, we've heard a couple of different managers speak to us tonight in terms of what they're doing, is it something that when you're working, or you're at the restaurant, you would be walking around and double-checking for IDs? What are some steps that you're personally taking to try to maybe pick up where there might be some slack from the employees?
A couple of things, yes, we do ask for IDs ourselves. If we do, if I see someone that I think's under 30, I will go up to that server and say, you know, are there, do I have to go up there, did you already check their ID? No, I checked their ID. After 9:00, at most of our establishments, we also have doormen, and that's their number one job, is to check IDs. Now, the servers are understanding that he does not exist, that he does not exist, he's there just for a second. Hopefully, if somebody that's under 21 walks in and sees that gentleman, they're high-tailing it, they're not gonna even take the chance of trying to get past the first step, let alone two. So, the doorman's just a second fear factor, if you will, of, don't try to come in.
My comment is, the reason that your record is really- My comment is, the reason that your record is really so clean from '99 to a certain point is when Mr. Bees moved into town here in '99, they were probably the only bar in town that did training. And the owner was a volunteer in the community that provided training to other bars and other restaurants and was a pioneer of getting training to most of the restaurants and bars in town. And it's disappointing for me to see, I think, maybe since he's left, I don't know if he's associated with this bar or restaurant any further, but I've noticed when it looks like maybe he has left is when some of the violations have started. So that concerns me.
That is correct. Scott did train myself. I am an ex-tips trainer. I used to work for Food and Beer Director with Marriott Hotels. Since then, we have hired somebody else to take over that position for me. But Scott was our partner up in 2008. We know the, we take it just as serious, if not more. Can't speak for Scott, but we do have seven liquor licenses, so we are not going to take the chance of any store-
Right.
-causing problems for the corporation.
I appreciate that. I just know really how training started in Troy and, you know, Mr. Bees was an integral part of teaming up with the Troy community coalition and providing training. And I'd just like to see that get back to the way it was, seeing as your restaurant was a pioneer for this city. So that's my little speech. But I appreciate that you would do what we've asked the other restaurants to do and bring your training up to current, and if you have to do some refreshers, if you could just work in partnership with Sergeant Zalinski, we would appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Further discussion? Mayor Protem Fleming.
You've heard some discussion tonight about the card-swiping system to verify the ID. Is that something you utilize now or would consider utilizing?
We would consider. We do not utilize it currently.
Okay, that's something I think might be value-added for you. Also, you've heard us talk about the decoy program, and you're using your own decoys. Is that something you would consider currently doing?
We do hire shoppers, and the shoppers have a list of things that they do. One, IDs. Two, and that's three, the quality of the food service. But we already do shop our own stores.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and move it back to the table for a resolution. Councilman Henderson.
Sure. I'd like to move the resolution that council has been persuaded the alleged violation did occur in that we recommend renewal of the on-premises liquor license for the 2013 license here with the stipulation of the additional training.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Pennington?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Our next public hearing is C-1H. I will open the public hearing, and if the parties for the new mayor, Indian Cuisine, could move, come forward to the podium.
As the parties approach, Mr. Mayor, I would like to indicate to the council that I only had a brief opportunity to speak with these gentlemen. It shows up as new mayor, Indian Cuisine. They're also known as Sam's Mayor. They're actually Haveli Indian Cuisine, and they indicated to me just before this meeting got underway that they are no longer operating the business. It's been, it's out of business. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves, but just I wanted the council to have that information ahead of time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Manoj Daniel. I'm one of the partners of this restaurant. He's Mr. Sabal-Sabal. He's also a partner.
So is it true that the business is-
Yeah, business is closed.
Is closed?
Yeah.
Okay. Could we get the facts of the incident?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, when I did have a brief moment to speak with them, they indicated to me that they were not contesting the fact that on November 13th, 2012, one of the servers did serve alcohol to a minor operating with the Troy Police Department's Directed Patrol Unit. The waiter did not ask for any identification and brought her a glass of wine. I will note that the server did pay the civil infraction ticket. As far as MLCC disposition, I recently found out that on January 10th of this year, a $500 fine was imposed by the MLCC. And do you know if that's been paid?
Yeah.
Okay, they're indicating that it has been paid. Thank you.
Could just ask, City Attorney Bloom, do we need to move forward on this resolution?
Well, certainly, there are no employees to train with tips or Tams training, but certainly would be appropriate for council to make a determination as to whether or not a violation was established, which would be the first part of the resolution.
But there wouldn't be any need to do the whole resolution?
No.
I don't see a reason to take the time to listen any further myself, unless there's somebody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item. Councilman Henderson.
Just one question to the city attorney. They state they're out of business, so then do we not need to act on renewing, not renewing liquor license or is that a T that should be crossed or an I?
City Attorney Bloom?
Yeah, you certainly could do that. However, we will do some investigation. I'm sure that they have already informed MLCC because the license will need to be placed in escrow if, in fact, they are out of business. If that is not the case, we certainly could bring it back to your attention at that same March 18th meeting.
Sergeant Zalinski did bring up a good point. I think we should ask for the record whether or not they indicate, they plan to apply for a license again in the city of Troy.
So we want to sell that, sell the liquor license?
Could you-
They're indicating to me that they plan to sell the liquor license that they have. So that would be something that the MLCC would take up. And of course, we can follow up with that and make sure that's been, that's been taken care of. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and return to the table for a resolution.
Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis.
I would move the resolution as printed, the first three paragraphs, and add now therefore be it resolved that as a result of this hearing, the Troy City Council has been persuaded that the alleged violation did occur at the above-referenced licensed establishment. And be it for the resolve that a certified copy of this resolution shall be sent to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming to approve the resolution as read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Pennington?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Took care of I. Our next order of business is public hearing, C-1J. I will open that public hearing and ask the parties involved with Thunderbird Lanes to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpersons. My name is Dennis Ross. Excuse me, I'm an attorney with the G.R. Marco Mullins and Horton Law Firm. I'm here tonight on behalf of Thunderbird Lanes. I have four representatives of the company here. Rich Galam, the vice president. Mr. Eric McAvoy, one of the managers. Mr. Michael Stein, one of the managers. And Janet Chaney, the bartender who was involved in this incident. And Ms. Chaney was cited, did pay the civil infraction. Thunderbird Lanes has been a proud member of the Troy community for 59 years. They are very serious and concerned about this subject. That's why we have the representation with us here tonight. We would, we admit that the incident occurred and don't dispute that. I talked to the city attorney about this the other day. We solicit any questions you have for any of the persons involved with the company or here today. We're going to ask that you recommend renewal, and we'll do whatever required, including the tips or Tams program that you would ask us to do. Thank you. Thank you.
If I may offer a brief recitation, Mr. Mayor. Again, this violation occurred on May 10th, 2012 as part of the Troy Police Department's Directed Patrol Unit involving a minor decoy. The minor decoy entered the bowling alley and was headed straight to the bar where she placed an order for a beer. According to the decoy, the bartender never asked for any identification or inquired of the decoy's age. The bartender, Ms. Chaney, did pay the civil infraction fine on May 30th of 2012. And with respect to MLCC disposition, it's my understanding that Mr. Galam appeared and pay, he was ordered to pay a $600 fine, and it's my understanding that that fine was paid. With respect to liquor license history, I note that there have been two previous sale-to-minor violations, the last one being in the year 2005.
Thank you. Questions from council? Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes, just curious, how many times have you passed?
I'm sorry.
How many times have you passed this decoy operation? You probably have a record here, but do you know how often you've been-
I do not off the top of my head, Your Honor.
Yes, we have passed a number, and I don't have an exact number.
Do you have that there, Mayor?
I do. First liquor inspection that's been documented is in '99, and generally, there, unless there's been a change, there are generally two compliant tests per year, and several times officers walk through an establishment to do a walkthrough. So there's usually two compliance and could be anywhere from four to six walks through per year since '99. Councilwoman McGinnis.
And we might want to note that this alleged violation occurred May of 2012, and subsequently, they had another compliance test in November of 2012, which they passed.
Thank you. Questions from council? I know Thunderbird-
Go ahead.
I know Thunderbird Lanes has been in this city as long as I can remember, and I noticed that you brought the bartender here tonight that served. Generally, those servers are fired on the spot. Is there an explanation why that wasn't done?
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to address that. Ms. Chaney has been an employee for 19 years at Thunderbird Lanes. She's been trained many times. She has had no prior problems. This is her livelihood. I understand that often, perhaps most of the time, there should be a no-tolerance policy. However, because of her loyalty and the length of her service, we ask that you make an exception. And she is here tonight to, and she understands, you know, what would happen and what should be avoided in the future. So she's apologetic and, but also concerned about her job and her long career there. Thank you.
It's unusual for the server to come before us, and I think that's a credit to her to come here tonight to face councilor questions. And I don't think this council requires that everyone gets fired. There are certain circumstances that, such as this, that I think you leave it up to the company to make that decision, as long as it doesn't happen again, I would assume. Thank you. But I appreciate you coming tonight. I do. Question? Councilman Henderson.
Again, no questions, just statements. You know, I know that at a bowling alley, maybe beer is not necessarily the driver, the real profit center. You do a lot of bowling. But in the event that a liquor license isn't at a bowling alley, I'm sure you can understand the impact of, you know, what it would do to the leaks. And then secondarily, and I don't advocate because I don't know any of the circumstances with the server in this case, but how do you, how do you address in the future if something like this happens with a different server that maybe doesn't have the longevity and the, and that sort of thing? How do you address that with those employees?
Yes, that was a long discussion and carefully considered. Janet is a mainstay in our business. She is our bar manager. She has been an exemplary employee for many, many years. That was really the weight on what I considered this. To answer your question, I would move that grace and discernment and the proper move would be given to me and to the company at that time.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes, I believe you stated there were two previous violations. Been quite a while, you passed most of them. But is this the first violation that Mrs. Chaney's had? I just want to clarify that.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Question.
Councilwoman McGinnis.
Is everyone that serves alcohol up to date on their training at this point, or do we have any idea when the longest period of time that anyone has gone without the training?
To my knowledge, all of our servers are tips or Tams certified. We're taking the additional step of having all of our managers as well tip and Tams certified or to be certified as trainers for that so that we can make sure that we remain compliant. Bowling as an industry does have both minors and of individuals of age, so it's extremely important that everybody is diligent and understands the importance of not only this, but, you know, for the future of Troy and for us as a business, that it is something we take very seriously.
So you do understand that you're going to have to get everybody tips and Tams certified and/or compatible and supply that within 90 days to the police-
Yes, sir, with 90 days within the Troy Police Department, absolutely.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one final thing. You've heard me state this several times tonight, or ask, do you have your own decoy program? Would you consider having your own decoy program?
Yes, we would. And if there is a recommendation for specific shoppers from the city, we would love to know that list as well.
Councilman Henderson.
Maybe another recommendation is have Mrs. Chaney participate in the training, in teaching the training.
She's been certified four or five times over the course of her tenure with our organization.
It does help sometimes to have a trainer that's, has some experience with what can happen. Does have a training effect, I think. Councilman Campbell.
Just one question. You've been doing this for 19 years. Maybe you should answer instead of having these guys answer for you. Just out of pure curiosity, all the training in 19 years back there, how did this one slip by you?
Pardon me, say that again. How did this happen? We just had a brand-new league start, and everybody was just slammed into the bar, and it was just an ongoing process, and I slipped up, and it was all CEOs, I do believe, so they're all of age.
Except one.
Except for one.
I thought I read in the report that the decoy couldn't get into the bar area and went to the bar outside. Is there a bar area outside of the normal bar?
I think our main bar was closed that day, was it?
Right, yeah, it did say it was closed.
It was closed, so they had to go down to the mini-bar, which is right out on the lanes.
Right out on the lanes. Once again, thanks for coming and facing-
Thank you.
-music, so to speak, but further discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for a resolution. Councilman Pennington?
Mayor, I move that we establish that there has been a violation, that we recommend renewal of the liquor license with the stipulation that the serving employees receive tips or Tams training through the, and give the Troy Police Department proof within 90 days.
Support. Support moved by Councilman Pennington is supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Good luck. Council need a break. We have two more.
Let's roll.
Let's go.
You tired?
What's that?
Keep going.
I'm okay. Our next item of business is public hearing C-2A.
Mayor, before you call that hearing, I just wanted to indicate that the previous hearings have all been on-premises licensees. The remaining two are off-premises licensees, and so there is a different standard. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record as well.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing C-2A. I noticed the parties are at the podium from Troy Party Store and.
That's correct. Zyrid Enterprises doing business at Troy Party Store. For record, Joseph Shmenter Jr., attorney on behalf of the Zyrid Enterprises. And to my right is Arlene Ryzuski. It's a family-owned party store. She's the mother. And her son, Daniel, who's working this evening, are really the two employees that work there. By way of background and the incident question, I believe it was on November 13th, Mrs. Ryzuski had just previously gone in for knee surgery. Usually it's just her and her son that run the store. They didn't have any other employees. She wasn't able to work that evening. Daniel was planning on going to deer hunting. He had a good friend that would stop by the store every once in a while. He was in his 40s, and he had asked him if he could work the weekend for him or those few days while he was gone. He explained everything to him. They have an electronic, for the licenses to check those. He thought everything would be fine. The first night he goes up there, he gets a phone call that there was alcohol sold to a minor. Ended up coming back. It ruined the relationship between him and his friend. His friend's never been back there. I'm not sure what happened. The friend did receive a, a ticket for it. I'm not sure what the outcome was. So it's unfortunately happened. There wasn't a normal employee that would be there. Both Mrs. Ryzuski and her son have gone through Tams. They have just recently hired a part-time employee. They've called up and set up an appointment for him to go through the Tams program also. So, you know, from my understanding, they've, well, they've had this party store for approximately 30 years. I believe they had one violation in 2008. I know throughout the 2000, they went to get some of the records. But I know from 2000 all the way through, they've gotten certificates of excellence, at least that I've seen through 2006. They've had, at least what I've counted from the records they could find, at least nine letters stating that the decoys were sent through, and each time there was no violation whatsoever. So they've, for 30 years, and to my knowledge, two violations, maybe three more than 10 years ago. Like I said, they take it serious. They do have the electronic device. I know Mrs. Ryzuski spoke to a woman this evening from the Troy Community Coalition, and they're going to make contact. She's more than happy to put stickers on the door and also on the alcoholic beverages that are being sold. They're here to face the music, you might say, but they would hope, you know, the council would understand. They try to, on their own, they haven't had a violation, like I said, since 2008. In fact, the violation in 2008, it was right at a time where the son had sold, but the father was in the hospital. He was having a lung removed because of cancer. And it was like the day of that happening. And his mind wasn't on the sales.
Thank you. If we could get the Assistant City Attorney to provide the facts for us. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I did speak with Mr. Chiamaturo the other day, and he did indicate to me that the, his clients were going to stipulate to the facts that he did want to offer the explanation that, that you just heard. On November 13th, 2012, minor decoy, a female, entered the party store, went to buy a bottle of wine. The clerk failed to ask for any identification or inquire about her age. Mr. Green, the cashier, did pay the civil infraction fine of $100. It's my understanding that the violation is still pending at the MLCC. I could not find anything. Mr. Chiamaturo is indicating that's correct. With respect to liquor license history, there are some older violations. The last one in my records are, is actually, the violation actually occurred in 2007, but the resolution occurred, was in 2008. So that, that might be the.
Same one.
Yeah, it's the same one. It occurred in 2007, December, I believe, and it wasn't resolved until 2008. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilman McGinnis?
This is an interesting set of facts because it really involves a third party that's not, not an employee in the normal course of business. So I guess my question would be, is there going to be a policy going forward in terms of who's going to be allowed to, to fill in and to make sure that that's someone that's going to be tips or Tams trained?
Well, my son and I are the ones that are mainly in the store.
Please move the microphone.
I'm sorry. My son and I are usually in the store because my husband no longer could work because of his removal of his lungs on the left side, both lobes. So anyway, right now we have somebody coming in, and we hope to get him started with the tips and Tams. And that would be the, the extent of it. If that's proper.
I think council is just asking that from now on, if you have anybody filling in or doing part-time work, that they are trained properly to, because.
There won't be any.
It always, isn't it? It always happens when you don't do that, and all of a sudden, something like this happens.
As soon as I'm able to get on my feet, and, you know, and I do go there every day, even now, and I bring this with me. But we continue on with our business.
But what they're saying, though, and like you're doing now, this part-time employee that you've hired now, you've already made application for him to take the tips and Tams class.
Yes, yes.
What they want assurance is that anyone in the future that you would have come in part-time or whatever, that before you let them sell any type of alcoholic beverages, they would have to go through tips and Tams class.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Right. Because it never fails when you do something like this, that it always comes back, it seems to bite you. So further questions, Councilman Pennington? I'm sorry, I thought you.
No, I didn't have any.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Oh, sure. Come forward.
Hi. I'm Nancy Morrison, and I am the Executive Director of the Troy Community Coalition. And one of the things that the Troy Coalition has implemented in the city of Troy is our Project Sticker Shock program, and where we have establishments in Troy who do sell alcohol, that they'd be involved in this. And I know he mentioned the stickers, and I wanted to show city council what these stickers are. They're bright orange, and what's written on these stickers are the legal consequences if anybody provides alcohol to minors. I have talked with Irene about this, and she is willing to work with us on this project. And this is a project that we really hit strongly during prom and graduation season, but however, it can be done throughout the entire year as well. So she has my business card and has agreed to contact me.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for a resolution. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Now therefore be it resolved that as a result of this hearing, the Troy City Council has been persuaded that the alleged violation did occur at the above referenced licensed Be it further resolved that due to the violation of the, at the licensed establishment, the Troy City Council, after due notice, appropriate hearing and deliberations requires that the licensee to require all serving employees to receive tips or Tams or other comparable training acceptable to the Troy Police Department and that a licensee prevent proof of this training to the Troy Police Department within 90 days of today's date. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution shall be sent to Michigan, Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Support will by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Pennington to approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Good luck. Our next public hearing is C-2B. I will open that public hearing and ask that NKG Business, Inc., known as Bushimy's, come to the podium, please.
My name is Najee Abdal. I'm partner of that Bushimy's.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. First, first of all, I feel sorry that happened in my business. Sorry. During the three years, that happens once, and I think Police Department of Troy checked many times on that, and all times we passed. And sometimes they send congratulation letter to us. But this time, you're, I don't know what happened. We are human beings. Sometimes you do mistake. But most important, we don't mean it. We never let anybody sell liquor for minors. As I want my kids to be away from the, in early age, from the liquor, alcohol, or from cigarettes, I want others to be. So I feel sorry that happened, and I will do my best to prevent that to happen again. I register all my employees now to take tips class, and we put the stickers on the, directly in the front, on the registers now, to let the employee remind that if he sell alcohol or cigarettes, he has to check ID in front of him. So he cannot sell now unless he get the ID. And we will do our best to prevent that again.
So you are giving all employees tips training?
I'm going to send them all. I registered them already. They're going to take the class.
Okay, if I could just get the Assistant City Attorney to give us the facts of what happened that evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like the record to reflect that Mr. Abdal does have an attorney of record. His name is Joe Shalal. I did speak with Mr. Shalal yesterday, and he waived his appearance. He did indicate to me that Mr. Abdal would be representing himself today. This was part of a Troy Police Department-directed patrol unit. The violation occurred on May 18th of 2012. It's interesting to note about this, the police department actually received a tip that minors were able to go into the Bushimy's, say a code word, code phrase, "I know Gus", and that would allow the minors to purchase, purchase alcohol. In this particular instance, the cashier, Ghazan Abdal, did allow the minor decoy, a male in this instance, to purchase a six-pack of beer, and the minor's age and identification was not asked for by the cashier. I would note that in, on May 23rd of 2012, the cashier did admit responsibility for the civil infraction, paid the $100 fine. With respect to the MLCC disposition, Bushimy's was fined $500, and it's my understanding that that fine has been paid. Is that correct? Yes, he's indicating that's correct. With respect to liquor license history, as Mr. Abdal indicates, this is their first violation at the, as NKG Business, but there is a history with respect to Bushimy's under the previous owners. They had some violations. I think the last one was in 2007. But I believe that was when the license was held by a different, a different company. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
As I read through the packet today, this particular situation was much different than all the others. And the first question I had to ask is, who's Gus? And has he been replaced by somebody else?
Yeah, he's here. Gus is my partner.
And is that, maybe, maybe he can come forward.
Sure.
So the police were tipped that minors could come into your establishment and say he knew Gus, and, and they can buy alcohol underage? Is that standard policy?
He misunderstands this, actually. It wasn't this, but he, the minor came to the store. I actually was busy doing a lot of things because we do food, I was doing food. And he, whoever was in the front, and he asks, is Gus here? And they called me from the back, so I came to the front. I say, yes, can I help you? And he said, hi, how are you? And they said, me to you. And even he shaking his, and my hand, he say, I'm Steve, and this, okay? And he got a, like, kind of beer, is, it was ale, raspberry ale, I believe. Yep, and how is that? I said, it's okay. And this, and like, it's kind of, I was thinking about my door to go back and this. So there was actually this, and that's why it's, actually, I should be, before I sell him this, I should ask him for his ID. But as anybody, he can come to the store, ask for Gus, and to be selling alcohol, I'm sorry, that, that's not right.
Just follow up?
Sure.
If the police were tipped off that that were a situation that, that could allow a minor to purchase, and that minor, in fact, went in and purchased using that scenario, and he was never ID'd, how many times did that happen, do you think, in, in the past year?
I've never. Always anybody, like, everybody know me, ask Gus in the store over there. I do the managing in the store, but he, personally, he came ask for this, but never, because all my employee, whoever is over the counter, he's the one responsible, ask him for his ID. Even if he say, I know Gus, or I know whoever, that's not going to happen unless he got his, he got card, then he's be old enough to buy either alcohol or cigarettes. And, and even for us, actually, for here, before, like, they ask us a lot to be carrying, I think it was K2 and spices. We only store Bushimy in Troy. We didn't carry it. I was the one, personally, I didn't want to, and I put a sign at my front door, we don't carry, and we don't, we don't want, we're not going to sell it in our store. Has to be something, because spices and K2, we didn't actually agree. And after that, I think they didn't let this to be sold anymore. But I, at that time, like I told you, even the officer came asking, I said, this is not right. Not everybody can come to store, ask for Gus, and he will be getting alcohol or any, or a cigarette or anything unless to be card or shown his ID.
I, I read the report too, and that jumped out at me that, you know, the police department got a tip that if they came in and talked to you, you'd give them beer if you were underage, and you're saying that that's not true, and that, that, that never happened before? Why, why would somebody call a tip into the police department and, and then somebody goes in there and asks for Gus and gets sold beer underage? That's, that's suspicious. I was reading the LCC report on page two, and if I could just, maybe the Assistant City Attorney could help me a little. When you were, when they, when they, the commissioner took under consideration for mitigative circumstances, a signed written statement submitted to the MLCC, and we, we don't have a copy of that. Is that something that we wouldn't get a copy of because it's with the MLCC? Or does anybody, can anybody talk to that at all?
Mr. Mayor, I believe if it, we don't get much information from the MLCC. MLCC sends to the police department the findings of fact. I don't have a copy of what's referenced in the, in the letter. I don't know if these gentlemen have a copy that they'd share with the council.
Could you talk to the microphone, please?
I write that statement. I told them, I feel sorry for what happened. I will do my best to prevent that to happen again. We never sell alcohol to minors in our store. We never, because we direct our people there to be very, very open-minded in this case. We take it serious. As we prevent our kids, we have to prevent others from reaching alcohol before, in, in the early age. So that's what I write to them. I, I think they accept that, and just give me, of course, they give me a fine for $500, and we pay.
Well, it does appear to me that the commission did take that under consideration, that you wrote in a letter.
I, I tell the truth.
May I ask Mr. Abdal a question? May I ask Mr. Abdal a question? Did you actually appear in front of the MLCC, or did you just write a letter?
No, just write the letter.
Okay. That might be what the confusion is. Most of the time, people appear in person in front of the MLCC, and it appears that he just filled out, if you look under findings of fact, the second, second, second line, it talks about a waiver and acknowledgement form. So I believe this was not a personal appearance that Mr. Abdal made at the MLCC.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
One statement, this alleged violation happened, or the violation happened in May, and they've since had a compliance test in November that you passed. But I am curious how quickly we can get everyone into the tips and TMS training because the violation took place in May. And I know you said you started that process, but I'd like to see that happen sooner rather than later, because now we're, we're going on nine months where the employees still are not trained. So that, that's going to be of importance to me, that that can happen very quickly.
Actually, I just hear about that. My lawyer told me there is a training like that, and he directed me to a school and just immediately, we call them and register with them, and I register everybody, they're going to take that class.
Okay.
How many employees do you have?
Six.
Councilman Henderson?
Mr. Abdal, I think it's a fair question to ask, since just about everybody else has been asked this. What has happened with the employee that sold the liquor? Is he still in the employment of Bushamies? What actions have taken?
He's my partner.
Okay.
He's my partner, so what I have to do. And he worked nine years in liquor store. He never, he never, always he passed. He was tested many times. I don't know this time what happened. So we are human beings. We all know mistakes sometimes, but we don't mean it for sure.
Follow-up question?
Sure.
Any idea how Bushamies would survive selling potato chips and pretzels and no liquor?
Pretzels?
How would Bushamies survive only selling potato chips and snacks if they didn't have a liquor license?
Never. They will die.
I just want to stress the importance of...
Will die, will close. Never. That mean we're going to lose the $1 million we put there, and we have 600,000 loan. So that will die for sure. And as you know, was closed for about two years when we buy.
Right.
And we get risk on that, because we know there is a good community in this area, and I, we think we has experience, we can do it. So thanks God, we are good now, and the store is doing good, and return back to the business in good, in good situation, and I hope you will help us to continue.
Councilman Campbell?
I'm just curious. Nancy, have you spoken to them about the same thing we were just talking about, about tagging their things? Obviously, I would be something else. Go right ahead.
I have not had the opportunity to talk with these gentlemen about Project Sticker Shock. We have worked with Bushamies in the past with the former owners, so I'm hoping that we can continue that partnership with the new owners. So I'll give them my business card before we leave.
I already have it in my store.
Okay.
I already have it in my store. Actually, been two times been sent to me, and always we have it, and are all, like, we put most of them in the beers, in the lines, to be like shown exactly on the front.
Okay. So you're talking about, you have like the window cling and then stickers for the 12-packs and cases?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Those are like the orange stickers, like saying how, I'm sorry, what's going to happen if you, if you sell to minors?
Correct.
And what's that is going to cost you and all that. I have this already.
Okay. Then I would like to recommend that you continue to do that, and we'll be in contact with you, or you contact me so we can continue to replenish your stickers.
This is my pleasure. I already have them in two years, and I'll be more than happy to do it again, again, every year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. No problem.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Have you had this store since 2010, is that correct?
2010, right.
2010. Is this your only store? Do you have other stores?
Well, we have another store.
In Troy or not in Troy?
Sterling High, so on Van Dyke.
Have you had any violations there?
One violation.
For sale to minors?
Yes.
And what year was that?
Actually, we were in, several years, we, over there, we were family, me and my kids working over there. So we took one day, sorry, we went out of the store, and we asked some of our friends and my partner daughter to help us on that day. And by chance, that day, a police checked with her, and she get ticket. She was not working there, but we went one day for vacation, only one day during four, five years, and that happened. So what we have to do?
It always happens. Councilman Pennington?
So, Mr. Abdal, is this your first business in Troy?
Yes.
Okay. Just with the situation and the details of the report, it just, you know, it's a little upsetting, you know, just the circumstances of how it was reported. So I would just, I would just stress that, you know, if you want to, you know, continue doing business in Troy, you, you know, it's...
Of course. First of, we have to obey all the laws and ordinance of the city. That's most important. And beside that, we cannot lose our business, because we put what we have in that business, and beside that, we have loans. So who want to kill his business? Nobody. Besides that, is, that's against the law. I don't want to do anything against the law. I never do anything against the law in my life. I'm civil engineer. I am consultant civil engineer. I never do anything against the law, back home or here. I understand the law, but sometimes when it happens, what I have to do. Sometimes happen. We are human beings.
Councilman Henderson?
Not intending to beat the dead horse, but I have a tendency to do that. As a parent, as I raised kids prior to adult, it was always a struggle as a parent to try to keep them on a straight and narrow.
Right.
And you remain stay in that area. I've frequented your location myself. It's a great store, and Gus is a friendly, friendly person. And I know the kid's probably warmed up to him and, you know, got his, got his attention by, you know, trying to make him a nice guy and everything, and maybe that's the trap that you fell into. I don't, I don't know that for a fact, but that certainly, I can see how that could lead itself. But being in that area, in the community that you're in, I cannot stress enough that you need to give the parents in the area the assistance they need to keep their kids away from whatever substance that is that is going to...
Yes.
...keep them from doing better in life, so.
Yes. As I want my kids to be away from this, I don't know, because it's not right for this early age to have alcohol. So as I want my kids to be away, I like others to be away, other kids to be away. But as I said, sometimes mistake happen.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know that there was an individual who did wish to speak, who is in the audience, so I know it's maybe a little bit premature, and I know that you're going to open it up, but I just wanted to let you know that there is an individual who did check in.
Thank you. I think the goal of this council is to try to help keep businesses...
Right.
...thriving. So I hope you take that in the spirit that it was given tonight, that it's our goal to make sure that you survive and prosper in Troy. And if you get another liquor violation...
I hope, I hope nothing will happen again.
We just...
Never, I hope, I will do my best.
Right. So we just want to encourage you to make sure that everybody's trained.
Yes, that's what we...
And if you want to reach out for some of those scanners that are available, where you have to scan, the Coalition can help you look at those, or the police department can certainly help.
They have it here, or you can buy it from...
You can buy them from a vendor, and sometimes it's the best thing to do, and then there's no mistakes. They'll attach right to your register. You have to swipe it to open the register for any sale of alcohol. So you might want to look into that, because anything that can help and assist, I think, is a benefit to a business. But it's our goal to make sure that...
I know. I'm going to try to do something to get their message. When they hit the bottom of alcohol, they get their message. Check, check ID. I can try to get any program or something like that, to get that in the registers. But for now, we put stickers to remind the employee, he has to check.
Understood.
For that.
Is there somebody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item that I can't see?
No.
No? Okay. I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for a resolution. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I will move the resolution as printed, the first three paragraphs, and then add, now therefore be it resolved that as a result of this hearing, the Troy City Council has been persuaded that the alleged violation did occur at the above referenced licensed Be it further resolved that due to the violation at the licensed establishment, the Troy City Council, after due notice, appropriate hearing and deliberation requires the licensee to require all serving employees to receive tips or TMS or other comparable training acceptable to the Troy Police Department, and that proof needs to be provided to the police department within 90 days.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bitter?
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Best of luck to you.
Luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the public hearings that were scheduled for this evening. Our next order of business is public comment for items not on the agenda. There's not many left in the audience, so I'm not going to read the disclaimer. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, this council is adjourned.